And. Anyhow, I guess, yeah, I think it was the. Sort of a lost opportunity. I think I think. Oh, it's in the source. I think this stuff is, yeah.
Yeah. All right. All good.
No.
Cheers. All right. Good evening, everybody who called this. Meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three at six thirty one P M. But you have a call. Old business. RSU ten update. So we have Superintendent Deb Alden. Uh. School Board Chair Gary Fashino. Is that I said?
Yeah.
That's all right. And School Board Member Erin Hankley here. We're hoping to have a little open forum with them and just discuss what's up with uh. What's going on with RSU ten and see if anybody had any questions for them and. Hopefully, we want to keep it, you know, sometimes you say it's getting more than we. But hopefully, we can keep it low key. Um. Anybody have any questions off right now or do anything that you would like to start with?
Well, I did um. Here um. Provided me with some questions that he had gathered from, and I don't know if it's folks that are here or just other. You know, some of you folks, but he did provide me with some, so I do have. Some of those I just don't, I don't want to be random, but. I can uh.
Oh, yes.
There are some of that information.
Would it be appropriate to invite these five?
I think it would actually. Yeah, come on. Come on. I'll even give up mine.
To look something up. We can you just.
Anywhere. It's the next.
We are.
I didn't want my.
You know. Stop. It is, I can start with something that was on the list and then we can. Do questions from here if people want. So one of the questions, well, first of all, this was very interesting. And I understand it probably came from Judy, but this was mailed. So this was fifteen years ago. I I couldn't believe it. But when I thought about how long, so fifteen years ago, this was like a. A flyer that was sent out um with information about when the districts were looking to go together. Um. And um I um wasn't here then, but and I had never seen one of these, so that was interesting to me. Um, but in it, it showed um the towns and there were, let's see, twelve towns. Um, and what their voting uh percentages were going to be. Um, and what what happens is you get so many votes out of a thousand, okay, when and so when. Five of the towns dropped out in two thousand seventeen, the voting numbers changed. And so one of the questions was, what what is it now? So um there are two directors from Buckfield and they both have a seven point seven percent. So that means Buckfield has, what's that, fifteen point four percent overall. Um, it was before it was four point nine each, so it does, it does. And it does the same thing for everybody, basically, goes up just a little bit. Um Hartford went from, they have one. Um, and it went from five point three to nine point two. And um what's the other one that's down here? Sumner went from four point three to seven point two. They only have one, two. But um. So it did go up a little bit, and right now on the board of thirteen members, we have three openings. So we have three towns, Roxbury, Hanover, and Sumner, if anybody knows somebody from Sumner. Um, that are open right now. So it, you know, I I that bothers me because that means those places only have one. And they don't have any representation.
We have been trying to.
Yes, we have. Definitely. So um that was one thing that was asked. Nobody has any. Interest about that or questions. Um, and the other thing that's kind of related to a little bit to that is um. It the consolidation proposed, the member communities locally raised funds. Um, were said to be seventy five, twenty five, so seventy five percent based on state valuation, twenty five percent based. Based on student population, and that is still the same formula. That formula hasn't changed, so that's still the same formula. Um, and um state valuation is not the same as your town valuation. Um, and sometimes people think it is, but it's not. It's something the state does every year. And um. This last year, I was, I was, I was glancing at um. This last year, Buckfield got hit hard on their state evaluation. Went well, went up more than any of the other six towns in the district.
Is that like twenty three or you looking at twenty four? It's twenty four, we're about to get hit even harder.
Oh, my word. Okay, no, I was looking at what we did. Yeah.
So much for Paul for being.
Yeah. Yeah. So um, so those were the two things that were. Kind of another thing that was on here and um. And it's interesting that I've seen this now, but it says in here that um. Some of this stuff. Oh, programs that potentially could be provided or expanded, and one of the things was world languages and um. And increased opportunities in world languages was an example and that. Some person asked and and why was that? Why did that not happen and why is it is it less now? Um, and I didn't, I didn't realize about this, but I can tell you that. Um, one of the things, and there's several areas that have this problem, world languages is definitely one of them. Is the lack of certified teachers in in the state of Maine is is um with world languages as an example of where it's it's really bad. Um, but apparently, and this was before my time too, um, the budget cuts in twenty fourteen. Um. Buckfield Junior Senior High lost a French teacher and Mountain Valley area lost um a person that was teaching both. French, Spanish, and American Sign Language. Um, and that's just, that's, that's sad. That's the year, and I wasn't here. But then I understand there was about forty staff members across the whole district that lost jobs. Um, because of of, and it was the. The superintendent that was here at the time was came after. The person that um Dr. Tom, Tom Ward was your first superintendent, I say first, but first after the consolidation. And then um. Yeah, so that's. That's unfortunate. Um, as as far as looking forward, um, we do have some opportunities for kids to take. Um, languages virtually. That's not always, you know, the best way to do it, but um we can do that. We also just received what's called um another Russ Grant and Russ is a rural. Federal Rural Grant Initiative. Um, and that, one of the things that does is really boosts distance learning. So we could have, um, we could, you know, let's say we had a student that was. Brilliant in the area of math and we needed them to take a, I don't know, advanced calculus or something, you know. You can't, you you not necessarily have a class for one student, but you could potentially um get a distance learning um situation. Um. As far as.
How effective is that? I've understood from Pat Pat that students in front of a computer very often tuned out.
You know, and even. I think it, I think it makes a difference of of who and how bad and. How interested they are. So I think if a student was using it because they have a real interest in an area. So if somebody was really interested in, let's just say, learning Japanese. For example, they probably would have the interest so that they'd be able to. To do that, you know, and that's when I think it works. I don't, I don't think it's one of those things that works. You know, for everybody, obviously, we learned that more than we needed to during COVID.
They had something over ten or.
Yeah, that was, that was a system back when, yeah. Is it, there are more that, no, no, there are. Okay, better systems. But um as far as what we're looking to do with world languages, so um up in the Mountain Valley region. Um, we have no world languages at our middle school level, so when the new school gets built, we're looking at putting it in there. Um, and then we've talked, I've I've talked with Troy um about, like I said, either virtual. Or another language, you know, they have um Spanish now at Buckfield, but you know, should we look at another language? Or should we look more um at something, a platform where kids could get? You know, more specific, you know, tailored to a variety of of. Languages. Um. Oh, we were just talking about about this before, um, and actually Erin and I were talking about it too. Um, but. E- expressed concerns about the increasing rate of special education, um, students um or. Students that need special ed services. Um, what do we attribute the increases to? So one of the things I do is look, look around the area at other districts and see, you know, are there percentages? And you look at percentages, are there percentages going up? And most everywhere, the percentages are either staying relatively the same. Definitely not going down or going up. And one of the places that um it was interesting because um Skowhegan is much like we are. In their rates going up into the into the twenties, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, we are up to twenty nine percent. Is, that's across the the whole district and it is disturbing. Um, I think a lot of things play into it. Poverty, if you end up having available housing. Um. Not saying, it doesn't seem like many places do anymore, but I I we, there is some available housing. Outside of of the cities, and I think that that happens. Um. One of the phenomenons that happens is if we have. You have a, you have students that move in. Um, we, and you have students that move out. If a higher percentage, if if you take the number of the students that move in. If a higher percentage um requires specialized services, then that automatically makes your percentage go up. So, uh, in other words, if 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 um one school, we were just looking at it and they were saying, oh, we've had. We've had a few move out, but we've had a lot move in and we looked at it and it was like thirty five percent of the students moving in already. Had identified disabilities. Well, that's gonna make, you know, if your percentage is twenty nine percent, that's gonna make that twenty nine percent go up without. Doing a thing. Um, so sometimes that that plays into it. Um. But as far as why do we overall have more children, you know, I I. I don't have the answer to that.
Everybody would like to have that.
You know, everybody would like to have that answer. But, I mean, you know.
Roughly, of the twenty nine percent of the students who receive special education. How many of them are serviced in the mainstream classes versus how many of them are serviced predominantly? Um, in a more restrictive setting within schools?
So, you know, that I don't have that percentage off the top of my head, but the phenomenon that's happened, which is is disturbing as well. Is that used to be. A high percent. So what she's talking about is somebody that might have a mild learning disability or um. Or a, you know, speech and language issue with communication maybe. Um, and they get more, most of their time in in the general ed setting with some extra help. What we're seeing is that used to be like where it might you, it might have been, you know, seventy five, twenty five. Or even eighty, twenty percent. It's shifting, which is disturbing as well. So it might be, you know, sixty, forty or fifty, fifty.
Hmm.
Um. And and that's. That's hard too. But I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could get it.
How many special education students do we send out of district?
Um, I believe, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm going to say it's somewhere. Between sixteen and twenty. And we've got, we can't find placements now when we need them. So that is. Tough as well. So sometimes you have to give those. You know, in situations that aren't the best. For everybody.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
You saw me, you guess.
Yeah.
Can I take a question for for special education? When was the last time the protocols changed through? Establish a child as a special. You know, the year.
Um. They they haven't changed a whole lot. Um, over the last. Ten years. Yeah. Um. Yeah, IDEA, which is the the federal law that that um allows for special education. Um. Trying to think of when it's. Another revision.
And that's nothing that the district has any control of.
Oh, absolutely not. That's.
No, 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 and I know, and I understand that.
Yeah.
But I mean, the journey of that for anyway, I will choose.
Yeah.
Last time the revision happened.
It has.
Yeah, it changes the value of.
Yeah, yeah.
Education levels.
Yeah.
Disturb disturbance levels and classrooms, all of that.
I I'm gonna say, and you know, this is just me and we, some of us were talking about this, but. I don't know that we know. What some of the um drugs or substances that that, you know, have been used um. Do, and I I just. You know. It's scary to me because um they're all our kids, so. But. Um. So, oh, so we we have a number of students that um are homeschooled. That come from our our seven towns. Um, and it's, I figured out the percentage, it's five point six percent if you take. All the students, um, not just that are in our schools, but all the students that are are K to twelve age. In our seven towns. Um, there's actually a hundred and twelve students that um are homeschooled. Um, which comes out nine, nine of them um come to our schools partial. So they may come to our schools for certain things like art music or something like that. Um. Uh. But it's it's five point six percent of the total. And um, and then we have superintendents agreements, and I should have gotten how many in too, because we have them coming in. But I didn't, but we have superintendents agreements for students going out, and that's a a hundred and twenty students. Um, which is six percent of all the students we have in those towns. Um. One, I was looking at some of the, a lot of the agreements come because people um. People work, so you you might live here in Buckfield and you might work in Arben or Liston, and you might want your students, your children to go. Where you are, or a big factor is where is the daycare? And there aren't a lot of daycares in Buckfield, Hartford and Sumner or or any of our. Areas. So um that sometimes, you know, people have relatives or their their parents live in Turner or wherever. They're asking for superintendent's agreements. Um. And so that, um, but we do have, on the other hand, we do have kids coming in. Um, that we get subsidy for that live somewhere else that parents um. You know, want to come to us for whatever reason. Um, and. I watch those situations on both sides. Um. Because if if we have students that aren't attending on a regular basis, and it could be because. Then they're not living close enough to the school and somebody decides they don't want to bring them every day, you know, that's not a good situation. So then deny them.
Oh. I know Frank King used to go around to those homes.
No, really. Did he? Did he? Yeah, uh, no, I don't. I I say that I don't go around to the homes, but a lot of times, oh, you mean the homes where the kids aren't coming to school? Oh, I've done that. Yeah. And it's a dream. No, yeah, yeah, we've had, we do, and we do. Yep.
There's a team of people that do that.
Yeah.
One more comment. I happen to have something that I have received back in in uh April, May of twenty thirteen, and. War told me that there are seventy five homeschooled students in the district. Eight take some courses that are counted as enrolled students.
Oh, wow. Okay, so so ten years ago, it was seventy. That's interesting. Yeah. Somebody else.
So I'm just looking for clarification, because. This is new to me. Five point six percent are homeschooled. In addition to another six percent that get sent out somewhere, is that?
No.
Could you say that part again?
No, out of the total. So.
Yeah.
Out of the total five point, out of the total.
Number of students in seven towns.
Yes, uh, that are that are like kindergarten through. Twelve, three, yeah. Um. Six percent of them. Are are in out. Like on superintendent's agreements and five point six percent of them are in homeschools.
So I don't add the two together?
No. What do you, well, it depends what you're. I say, what are you talking?
I'm looking for the total number of kids that aren't.
Here, yes, then you could, then you could add that.
So it's really. What is up?
Two hundred and thirty two. Yeah.
Okay, that's what I.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's all.
Okay, okay. That was that, but and then and then, of course, then there's some on top of that that we that.
But we don't know that.
I I could get it. Oh, I have it not in my head, but or on the page, but I have it.
Thank you.
Do you know roughly how many students there are in the entire RSU? And I know that changes.
Yeah, and when you say that, I have several different numbers. If if you mean how many, if you add those numbers together. With the, the, all of them. Um.
Kids that ultimately were responsible.
Like nineteen ninety four, I think it was. And like seven, seventeen sixty two attend the school and somewhere I've got um. One. Um. And then. Counts attending, yeah, seventeen sixty two attend the six schools. And. Sort of a twenty three, seventeen seventy eight, we get subsidy for.
And how of the nineteen ninety four, how many of Buckfield? Students? Do you know?
What I don't know is, I I know how many. From Buckfield attend our schools. I don't know how many of that hundred and twelve. Like the hundreds twelve.
So there may be some that are out.
Absolutely, some of them are Hartford.
Okay.
Mexico. Yeah.
In attendance.
In attendance, um, right here.
And this is way more than I thought you'd have right in front of you, so thank you so much.
Sure.
I'm impressed.
Okay, oh, not those numbers. Nine, one.
I'm not holding you to this either.
Five nineteen.
Is Buckfield or Buckfield Hartford Sumner?
Buckfield Hartford Sumner.
So we don't know just Buckfield.
I don't know just Buckfield, no.
So I was pretty close to my head.
Yes, five nineteen, and what that doesn't count is kids from the three towns that. Are on superintendent's agreements out.
Yeah.
And kids um from the three towns that are homeschooled.
And what's the total RSU budget?
That was.
Budget, was it?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty one.
One or thirty nine hundred and ninety. Thirty million nine hundred and ninety.
Yes, thirty one million last year.
Yeah.
And we kept that uh under a point five percent. That was our. All the ascending town. But it affected different towns differently because. Value.
Yes. Does.
I, I maybe I'd like to ask Ken, what percentage of our expenses go to the school? How much? It used to be like sixty percent.
Well, it depends on how you do in the formula. It wrote on the tax bill that shows you. So I don't have the percentage in front of me. Uh. But.
You're on the tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the, the municipal budget was two point four million. The RSU budget was one point seven two five, and then county tax was a hundred and sixty thousand, so.
It's in the forties, I just can't remember. It was in the forties.
Think every town's a little bit different, not the percentage.
They have finally done the equation correctly. Can you?
It was.
That's true. Yes.
RSU for the school budget was a larger portion of of the overall taxes, and it wasn't, it wasn't correct. Oops, what am I going there for? I need a town website.
This is gonna take you a minute. Should I ask a question?
You can ask me questions. Actually.
So something that community members are talking about and asking about. Um. And that comment that's thrown out there a lot is, why are we still part of the RSU? And would our community be better off if we withdrew from the RSU? And I. I don't have enough information to give them. In informed. Comment on this. Um, my math may be very much off, but it it looks to me as though. Twenty six percent. Of the students in the RSU are from Buckfield Hartford Sumner. And. Buckfield pays five point five percent of the budget. Which means that as a town, we're getting a pretty good bang for our buck. I may be off on this. So the twenties, the five point five is just Buckfield, the twenty six percent is Buckfield Hartford Sumner.
Right.
But I would imagine that Buckfield. Has at least as many, if not more, students than the other two communities.
Yeah.
How much of the overall RSU budget is subsidized?
Um. It's just. It's, it's six, high sixty percent, so it was something like. Sixty eight, sixty nine percent. Because the the taxpayers were paying thirty ish percent, local was thirty ish percent. Yeah.
Uh. I just put a comment, I think Hartford pays a very large amount. Because they had had a half higher valuation.
They have, they have a lake.
They have a lake. Right. That lake.
You know.
Evaluation and into your point, I just want to elaborate on what the town of Hanover was looking at. And I sat in and listened to their conversations. Uh, they had a town meeting. They brought everybody in and they had representation from the state, people in uh Oxford County Leadership. That sort of thing, and they overwhelmingly, they looked at the numbers of what it would, if some of the selectmen wanted to. To go on their own, which, you know, everybody has a right, that's why we're in America, but uh after they had a long discussion, it was over. Overwhelmingly voted down for a number of reasons, and I don't know all the reasons, financially it was a big. Um, uh, they asked me what I thought. In the next few years, once we get this new school built and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're gonna be eliminating. Two schools. We're going.
Three.
Three schools, three schools.
Buildings.
And one, one we're tearing down and two we're giving. And one one we're tearing down and two were given to one to Mexico and one to Rumpford. So those, there's three less buildings we're gonna have to maintain. So we should see a savings based, you know, based on what it takes to run a school, to heat, to staff, that sort of thing. That should be one of the pluses. Of course, the new schools didn't cost money, but. With the modernization that they're putting into it. And I I sit and listen to hear what they're doing every day. It's gonna be pretty awesome. It should save all of us some money.
Cause when you said it's gonna cost money. It's it's not going to cost any of the taxpayers. Money.
I was talking to.
Right, obviously you have to maintain by maintaining a new building is.
It's gonna be better.
And I hear all of this and I agree. And I'm so happy for the kids and the staff who will be in this new facility. But what I'm hearing from the people in town. The budget is painful and. It's hard right now for people to make ends meet. And. I I think that people are feeling that they don't have much say in how. The money for education is spent. In the schools here in Buckfield. Whether or not that's the case, that's how people are feeling. So I guess one question I would have is. How can the community get involved? In the way money is spent for the education of the students from our community? And the next piece would be. It's hard to hear about a new school when you've got kids. In. Trailers. Portables. And it's hard to hear about a new school when there's talk of, and I'm not sure where these. Sixth grade students, the proposal of where they're going to go. But that's hard for people to hear that the savings that this new school is going and it's fantastic and it's great enough. I'm glad. But that's hard for the community members here to hear about when they see the state of affairs. Of our own schools. It's there, there's some problems. And so that's where the frustration is coming from and if. If we can find a way to. Better educate folks to help them understand the positives, to help them understand how they can. Have a say in their tax dollars being spent to educate their students. I think that would go a long way to. To to bridge. The some of the discord between the community.
Deb can probably elaborate better than I, but you have two people that are representing you in this the community. Aaron being one, Allison Long being another, who are very. Allison is a little bit more seasoned than Aaron, but you have two good people sitting on our board. And as chair for the last few years, I can tell you, we have a great working board and everybody has a say. Particularly around budget season. We have, you know, finance committees and. Aaron's gonna be on, so. People can ask questions of their representatives and their representatives. I'm a representative for Brunkford. If the selectman, and I was a selectman, thirteen years. Uh if they come back and say, what's going on with the school budget? It's my obligation as it would be hers or Allison's and. Allison would have all the figures you ever want, believe me. And um they would give you that information. We also have public hearings on the budget. That comes that while we come down. We have public hearings. People don't show up that.
Don't hear about them.
Well, we advertise them. I'm sure I I can guarantee that.
But they're all streamed online.
Yes.
Right, because I.
All of the meetings.
Yeah, I I feel confident that there aren't a whole lot of people at this meeting and there may not be a whole lot of people watching it right now. But they will. So that there are people who do go and and I know that I'm one of them because the meetings are at a time that I can't attend. But later I go and and watch.
Some of our school board meetings are down here.
Yeah.
Every third or fourth, right?
Yeah.
It are down here. And we started doing our committee meetings. Our committee meetings are. Once a month and we started doing every third month, having them down at the high school. And we want people involved and we wanna hear from people. So it it is. It it. It 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 happens all over and and it is, it's frustrating, I'm sure for everybody. You know, it's frustrating to figure out when's when's the time and am I am I available and and whatnot to attend meetings. Um but we want to hear those things and and what is important to people. So tomorrow night and and I didn't do it one night after another on purpose, but tomorrow night is um. A forum at the high school and we've tried to put that out and I don't know if it's, if we tried to put it out around. Yeah, um it's it wasn't going to be, but do it help if it. I can see if if Brian can do that.
Do the flyers go out with the students to say this is happening?
They handed them out to teacher conferences.
Yep, yeah, yep.
And and my piece here is not to be confrontational with you at all, but.
No.
Better and and you're absolutely. Right, people need to.
That comes from the top down. We have nothing, you know, sitting there as a board member. We try to do the best we can. I I can tell you this. I sit on the Maine State School Board Association and I listen to what goes on in other communities. And I will say this, we did a pretty good job with our budget this year. I know it affects different towns differently because of the state evaluation. But we, I I told her and Jerry Wiley was sitting beside me. We told her point five percent tops. I think there were several of us that said that and. It was done. I can tell you this, other towns were not so fortunate. They were seven, eight, ten percent increases in their budget over a year ago. A lot of the smaller towns that weren't getting the state subsidies. That we get in this district.
We were one of the few that got more state subsidy last year. Still doesn't, it's still. Doesn't trickle down to each town the way.
Living in Hartford, I can tell you it doesn't.
Yeah.
Just another.
So one of the questions that might address you, you talked about the the sixth grader. So first of all. We had had, I I say we um talking with folks that are on the building um. Grounds Committee um back when Jerry was, you know, the the chairperson and everything. We've always talked about once we got that. Building and and this process started in two thousand seventeen when they, when the state was taking applications and um. So in like, you know, four or five places get picked out of seventy and it's the district had to be won and. The ultimate, and I totally get it. I totally get it. And I said all along. And Jerry was really, that was really important to Jerry too. But we said all along. We are not going to do extra things on this school because we're not going to expect Buckfield Hartford and Sumner taxpayers. To pay part of it. You know, because there's a lot of school projects out and about that the communities. Extra money into them so that they can have, you know, some stuff that would be awesome. And and we said absolutely not, even if the Rumpford and Mexico want it. You've got three towns that it's not there for and we kept with that. And I still think we're gonna have a, you know, a good building and and be able to put aside three. Buildings that suck money. Um so that said, we've always known all the way along that the next thing we've gotta do. Is look really closely at these two buildings down here and what do we need to do going forward for the future? And so we put money aside. In this budget. Um to do an architectural study. And the architectural study, although if if we end up with enough, we could do it on both buildings. It's really for. Buckfield Junior Senior High because that's the facility that was built to be able to have. Um the expansion if needed or um if it's got the land, okay? Hartford Sumner had the expansion back. I don't know what year that was, but. Yeah, yeah, was it? Yeah. So and that doesn't really have, it's not set up to have more put on it. That brings us to. Things like. Where where do we want the sixth graders to go? And and the reason for that question is several things and somebody asked here. But first of all, we promised um full time pre K. When that building up there opens, that region will get free full time, full time pre K. And we've said so only fair, this region gets full time pre K. Um so when we need to do that, again, that's a space thing. And um so that's one reason. Um the sixth grade is in the portables, you know, and that's. Right? Do we want? Sixth grade or anybody in portables? So that's that's another thing. I explained about the reconfiguring or expanding. Buckfield, we can do that easier um or it's more likely we could do something there than it is Hartford Sumner. Um and then just, and these are, this is not a have to either, but these are just some of the reasons many middle schools. Are six to eight because it's six to eight curriculums are often you have. Um K two, three, five, six, eight, nine, twelve is what um curriculum areas go. Doesn't have to be. But like for instance, um. We have a sixth grade, a a six eight math program. So you know what I mean? So the teachers that are using it. At Hartford Summer with the teachers that use it, you know, in the other building, you know, it's it's just things like that, which again, I. Be all end all, but that would bring up why we would have that conversation. And then just to balance the two schools, seven grades in each school. I mean, again, that's not a make or break, but it's just a. A piece. But at the same time, that would be one of the things that we would look at. If we were gonna make any any changes. When we look at the building, some of the things that have been brought to my attention. That we wanna try to solve is we've got an art room, we've got an art program. In what was an old shop with a garage door and. Noise and and all kinds of stuff that isn't really appropriate. Um we need, we needed, they wanted to refigure the. Um gym locker rooms because they've had complaints because of when you have officials there, there's no. Usually in a gym, there's someplace the officials can go that isn't with the locker room with the kids. And there isn't. So they were gonna make something, but it would. You know, it was like it would about the. One or the other room. So anyways, and the kitchen. Isn't big enough for the equipment we have now or and and are getting through grants. And you know, this this the music program is out in the portables because we don't have, we have a. We have a stage, which is wonderful to have a stage and a and a music office. So you don't really have a. You know, what you would want to have for a musical. Doesn't mean we. Will decide to have all those things or get all those things, but this was saying, okay, now we should look down here at the whole thing. And sixth grade just happens to be in the middle of that whole thing. So it wasn't just about the sixth grade. That's just. Part of it. Long story for that.
So I'm I'm just gonna ask, so does Buckfield have fifteen percent of the vote to decide where Buckfield's sixth graders will go to school? What do you, what do you mean?
Based on.
So if.
The weighted.
Does the school, right.
The weighted vote.
So Buckfield will have fifteen percent.
There would be two people from Buckfield voting at the school board meeting.
I see what she said. They would have.
Yes.
They would have a total of fifteen and a half, but. Now, just so you know, because we have. Three openings. They really have more right now with those three openings, you really have a higher percent.
But Sumner doesn't.
But one of them is Sumner, but they don't. But you know what? I'm I'm gonna say this only because I remember this one other time. If it's, if it's mostly affecting. If it's mostly affecting. Buckfield schools. Right? The the board members, and we did this one other time about something and I can't remember what it was, but um. The board members that are from, say, Rumpford, Mexico. They're listening to what people. Want. They're not going to say, well, right? I mean.
That's not how we.
Yeah.
I think that's what people want to hear.
No, because.
In this community, they want to hear that.
You know, the ramifications or what people are saying because we were rented by the state a new school with no cost to the. The district. But it has to work both ways. I I look, you know, at the gymnasium in Buckfield. I mean, every year in our budget season. Correct me if I'm wrong, we prioritize each building. Each board member has a chance to sit down and and Jerry was was really good. It's and and nothing against Aaron. But her and Allison are gonna be. Top people. You got two good people. Jerry was, you know, always walking around the school and. And communicating with the principal and and coming to me and to Deb and. Speaking his mind and well, what about the the roof down here in Buckfield? What about this? And that's the kind of representation that you need. So when it comes time to talk about the finances in budget season. We come back, we sit down together collectively. We have schools that these two schools are gonna be with our district. Once the new school's built, these two schools are staying.
Yeah.
So we need to take care of. And it's as simple as that. So we will. We're not gonna let this house fall down. Because there's only fifteen percent of the vote down here. I give you my word. We'll take care of our buildings. I own property. I take care of my property and we're gonna take care because of our students and our staff. Need a safe place to be and a and a good place to be. And we will ensure that. I promise you.
Oh, I. I I've seen the plan, the plans for both schools and when they. Well, in nineteen ninety, we built the high school. And its capacity was three hundred and fifty students. The capacity of Hartford Summer was also enlarged to three hundred and fifty students. Uh we're now down. Between the two schools to I think it's like five hundred and twenty. Now, we did get a little bit higher. We actually got as high as seven hundred and sixty three students. Back in nineteen ninety five and since then it's been coming down, but. We had, we had uh those extra rooms, the trailer rooms. We got rid of those. We didn't need them anymore. And now suddenly we need more trailers, we need more space. And I'm wondering, are we using our space effectively in the schools?
So that's.
Do we have a lot of of administrative people in classrooms? Who should be off in a corner someplace, leaving the classrooms for students.
So um excellent, excellent. Questions. And that's one of the reasons we're gonna do do the architectural space study. Because our, could we better utilize this space? Part of, part of the issues that we didn't have. I'm gonna say in nineteen ninety or ninety five, but and I'm not saying we didn't have any of them, but you didn't have like you have now. Is some of the space that's needed for student programming. That is um because you can't have. As many students together because of their special needs. And that creates um. That creates space that is like. So when you design a new building, you can put those spaces that you need in it. And when you have a building that's already there that doesn't have those types of spaces, you make it up as you go along. And it takes something that's like, like you could take a room this size and say you don't need this much. But here's the room, right? And you really need, you know, a couple, two or three different spaces for. You know, kids and meetings and not so much meetings, but you can meet anywhere, but kids. Um that can only have, that are have one on ones or or things like that. And that is. Um that's a problem anywhere where you have a building that's even thirty years old. It's it's it's. It's frustrating, but I think that is part of what happens. But I agree, it's it's like the spaces there and Jerry would say that all the time to me and he goes, man, this is built for. But if you actually walk around and see. You know, it it's, it, you need it to be used differently and you don't, you know, you you don't have it. you know, you, you don't have it designed that way. And so you take what you have, and it may be bigger than what you need in one spot. And, but, but that happens too, that's happened everywhere. But that doesn't, that's just my comments on it, but
You know, the high school had that big technology center that we built before we went with art with uh Region eleven. And then we removed everything, all of the equipment, the machines.
What? Oh, that was, cause I, I was told that was a shock.
Yeah.
Well, it was more like a shock. It was, it was a technology center that was ours. We, we had previously gone across the mountain, now we had our own place and it's quite large. And it's on two floors and maybe it has garage doors, that's not the worst thing. But why couldn't that space be used more effectively?
Well, if it's where I, where he's saying, it's the art room now, which isn't
It's not an art room, you don't have, how large an art room do you need for art?
Well, it's not
Welling's machines and, and uh all other types of machines in there.
I don't think they're
That's for technology, I think, calls it.
Oh, okay, I don't know.
Yeah, it was a real tech center.
I think
Well, we don't, cause kids have the technology that goes with them now, so.
Sure.
And I think when I talked to uh Troy, one of the issues that the R S U had faced too with Blake Holmack and, and Schott was certified
Certified teachers, they don't even, yeah, it's bad. I mean, you did, I, I don't mean it's bad, but it's, it's, they're on, it's only, they're on.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, one other thing that, that you, somebody asked, um, was available slots over in Region eleven. And um, so what they do is they, they rough out two slots in each of the twenty um programs, which is forty slots. But they don't, they, they almost always have enough room for um the kids that wanna go there. And they don't necessarily have to be like, only two slots and this can come from Buckfield. You know, you might have nobody in that one and you might have four in that one. But um, but it's, it's a total of forty anyways. And um, I think we've had like around thirty-five, thirty-six most years, which is a really good percentage for, for us. Which is great.
Well, now, the question, do they still allow, I know when Pope was there, they would allow students who were going to Region eleven and had to wait for the bus. If they needed a course back in Buffalo, they were allowed to take it if they were available.
Yes.
And, and get credit for it, or they still allow that, absolutely, that's very
Yeah, it is good, it is very good, that program over there is really good.
It was good.
And they're expanding, starting an electrical program in the building.
Yeah, the plumbing.
Building.
Plumbing and electrical.
It took region over there. Law enforcement, look at me.
Okay, any questions? These might get answered tomorrow, cause I planned on sending the meeting tomorrow. Um, so I guess the way it was described, it didn't give me like an outline of exactly what was gonna happen. Because so far I've heard in this meeting, a lot about facilities. The decision, or even the topic of this conversation is all about facilities and space. And I'm a little concerned that you're doing an architectural study. What are we doing, or have we thought about how this is going to affect the sixth graders? And, and how that's gonna affect them for the rest of their time through the schools? You're taking sixth graders who are prepubescent, sticking them in with high schools. So I'm gonna have some questions like that tomorrow, and I don't know
I don't think we'll be able.
I know, and so I don't know if people will be ready to answer some of those, but you know, have we done those types of studies? There are studies from Duke University says this is a bad idea, there's a study from the N E A that says this is a bad idea. So I'm concerned that we're not thinking about the students first and the space is part of it. But we're thinking about the space and facilities.
So
The room, so we need to move these kids without thinking about how it's gonna affect the, because I also wanna know, how many years is this gonna be? Because I have a third grader. So I don't think it's gonna happen next year, I'm thinking it's gonna happen when my granddaughter gets to sixth grade, and this concerns me. Um, concerns me.
Yeah, so um to me, it all needs to be talked about.
Yeah.
Right, and you're right, the kids are much more important, important than the space. But if you're going to, if you're, if, if you're going to make those decisions, like, oh, okay. So why aren't we, we're gonna expand pre-K, why aren't we talking about pre-K in the, in with the middle school and high school? Well, because for obvious reasons, you know, we need the pre-K to be near where the kindergarten is, where the first grade is, okay? And, and so that's, to me, the, that's the one grade. It doesn't mean they have to, it doesn't mean they have to. It's that, it's that in, i- it's just if we were going to move anybody, if, if, that would be the grade.
Or I, and I, unless somebody has some other idea. No, I totally get that the
Yeah.
Idea is there was a promise that was made.
Yeah.
And a promise needs to be kept.
Totally, I'm sure. Pre-K and totally, it has to do with early intervention, which is related to getting these kids some things that they need that might help make a change when it comes to all the special
And I also don't want it to be at the neglect of the sixth graders going into being the bottom dog. You say they are losing
Yeah.
One of the most important things in their life is being top dog in that school.
Absolutely.
And that, that isn't, you can go look at the study the N E A did in two thousand and sixteen, it's very poignant, and it speaks about you are always going to be top dog and, and bottom dog out in your life. And this is one opportunity that they have, that that experience is something that continues with them for the rest of their life.
And it would be, it could be whatever grade, right?
It, it's true, but you're putting them now possibly in an area where they're at that prepubescent. It's a really difficult age, I mean, people think that being fourteen is difficult, it's not. It's that twelve and eleven, you're now mixing eleven and twelve-year-olds with those teenagers.
So, so we haven't done it here yet. Now, in our other, we, we have five, six, seven and eight, and we don't, you know, we didn't really wanna move the five, but we had to because of space. So, you know, and, and I'm not saying I would say five, six, seven and eight, I would, but, yeah, you're right.
And, and I get it, yeah, like there's
Yeah.
Look all across the nation, what works, what doesn't work, it all depends on the towns, schools, children. K through six typically is K through six. If there's space that's usually needed or you had to move kids, it went six, seven, eight. It typically doesn't go six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Is that what they did is they grouped teens in more with who they were. It would be seven, eight, nine would be a more of a match and letting ten, eleven, twelve be alone. But we're now mixing sixth grades, I know we're trying to make it even, but that's, that's some of the questions I'm gonna be asking.
So, yeah, and I, and I'll just say, one other thing, just, I'll just say is, remember, our buses here are pre-K twelve.
Oh, oh, yeah, we're talking
It's, it's not just that those sixth graders, and, and they aren't mixed in the building.
That's true, yeah, well, but our bus ride is different than And like locker room, bathrooms.
Not sixth graders come and play sports with the seven and eight anyways.
If the high school, my, my questions for tomorrow, and I guess I'll leave you for tomorrow, is, are we talking about, oh, how are they gonna be placed? Where are they gonna be placed? So I don't know how the high school's set up, so that's what I'm waiting for.
And he's gonna give
The wing is the
He's gonna give, was to show you, so the seven and eight, and if it was six, seven and eight, or in a, in a different wing, I'm not saying that there's not open, but
I just wanna say something, um, like, cause I went to school there and stuff, the seven and eight, you are pretty separate, like, it is a small school. But going there, I didn't really run into high schoolers, I didn't really, you know, I
They're on a different schedule.
It's like I, you know, purposely went out of my way to try to go, and we're on different schedules. Lunch, you never ran across them, uh, like, I'm not saying either side's crap.
No, no, that's good, that, that's what
Just from my point of view, like, I never really ran into high schoolers unless it was like, my brother came, just, you know, wasn't anything like that, but, yeah, I continue to concern for both sides.
You know, as a parent who went to uh K through six, junior high was seventh and eighth, and then we went to high schools, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. I, I'm not saying this as a terrified parent, I'm saying this as, as an educator. That's my degree, I'm the daughter of a school teacher, junior negotiator, all that, so it's not that I'm oblivious to some of what your facility needs are. And I understand that, I just wanna make sure, if we're gonna do it for the town, I want it to be the right decision, because people ask me the same questions they ask you. And right now, I'm like, I don't know, we're gonna, we're gonna go see what it's, what they're talking about here.
Yeah, and that's why we're talking, cause it's not a done deal.
Right.
And, and the other reason we are talking about it is because when we do look at what are our options for the, for the facilities, right? It, what we want in them makes a difference, right? Of what option we might want. So um if we absolutely, if the communities absolutely do not want, you know, they want eight grades, you know, in that facility, we'll figure it out. Um, but I don't know, you know, it may just get more and more, I don't know.
Oh, and I told, it is, it's not gonna be an easy fix, but I don't want, I want to be able to say to people, no, this is the first step. They're willing to listen, this is a conversation, this is not like next year's budget. This year's budget, we put in architectural, next year's budget might be something else. But we're, when, when are we going to put pre-K in this school, when does that happen?
Um, it's happening up in the other region in twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six.
Alright, so, so we got like, at least, at least those steps.
That's why we're talking.
So that's, that's nice, because I can tell them, okay, this isn't happening after this year, it will be twenty-twenty-six-ish.
Yes.
Cause that's when we promised
Yep. Yep.
Pre-K.
All right, absolutely, why not put two K in one of the trailers or the, the, the modulars that were put out?
Um, they, we have to re, well, first of all, they have to have plumbing go out to them.
They used to have um water bodies.
Um, I don't think you're gonna do that, I don't think you're gonna do that with four-year-olds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hosting boil.
I don't think that would be I don't think that is probably allowed.
Like, let's see.
What you say?
Um.
Again, I'm not sure I completely understand. Going back to the beginning, where I believe he said, and it may not be the best words, but twenty-nine percent poverty. Was it twenty-nine percent poverty rate?
No, it was twenty-nine percent of our students are identified for special education.
Okay, so, so that percentage is twenty-twenty-three?
Yes, that's this school year.
And what's gonna happen tomorrow night will be a further expansion of this conversation in reference to expanding just the Buckfield Senior High School.
To the sixth grades.
To the sixth grade.
And, and what, and some of the other things that we've talked about that, that are needs in the high school.
Okay, so my, what, okay, so then my question is, could you please help me understand what data analysis you're using to inform the decisions? In other words, has anyone looked at the, the state's projected population increase versus just Buckfield's population increase or decrease? Um, that would be one data set. Has anybody looked at in the last ten years that somehow we got the twenty-nine percent special ed? In the last however many years, that's its own data set. Has anybody projected that out for the equal amount? Is that twenty-nine gonna go to forty-nine? So that when the architect is walking through the building and looking at, oh, we need this space for this reason, will it include
The future.
Those projections for the future? Or is it just like, we're right here, right now, we're gonna make this decision? Can that be explained either tonight or tomorrow night?
School. I don't know that I can explain it tomorrow night, but we definitely have to look at those things. Let, let me give you an example.
Sure, sure, thank you.
For this last project that we've just done, we had to get um a person in the state that does those enroll, that does enrollment studies, and they had to do a ten-year projection. And I have it, they did it for the Mountain Valley region because that building wasn't gonna affect people down here, but, so they did a projection. What was interesting, it didn't project special education, because that's nearly impossible to do, cause that has to do with moving in and moving out and stuff, but they projected the overall um uh numbers per enrollment per grade. And so I, each year, I, I take that and I put what is real on it. And um it goes, it goes a little up and down, but it's been right on that projection. And um, so we can do it, we can do it, I mean, I can't do it for tomorrow, but hey, that's one of the things we can do, is we can do upper, and if the, if we did anything with a building project and the state were gonna help us, we absolutely would have to do it anyways.
Okay.
So, yeah.
But just not special.
Yeah. Um, it, you, what would happen is you do the projection for the, the amount of students and you figure your percentage.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, it's good to know.
So, other questions, I know that it's not, but well, so
Hey, Chris, yeah, you know, going back to this, since we all received, when we first went into the disprints, would you say that the educational benefits, but the consolidation has been lost there?
Have, would you say have been worth it?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Well, I will tell you, and this is people telling me, not that I knew, because I wasn't here when
I know.
When you first went in, but um, is one of the things on this list is access to technology. And what um, some of the technology folks that were here then and are here now, um, but were, were kind of, and, and this is not, I'm, I'm just saying what they, you know, they were a little shocked when, you know, at what um the students down here didn't necessarily have, for example, um for access. And um compared to the other two areas, the Dixfield area and the other area. And that was all brought up to, that was all brought up to the same. Um, I think there's a lot of things that um have been um brought up to the same amount, you know, or, or, you know, e- equitable um situations between the areas. Um, and I don't know, you know, I know there was probably all kinds of things everybody went through and I, I, I I don't know, cause I wasn't here then, but, but um, I don't think it has hurt Buckfield, Hartford and Sumner to have joined. And I'm gonna just say what, how I've taken it, and I've taken this since the beginning that I took this position. When I took the position, um Dixfield was still in and they had just done the vote, um just as I was coming. And, and I went, oh no, you know? And, you know, it was like the middle fell out and I, I thought, I, I felt like that was really too bad for everybody. But in my mind, I made it my mission that both regions are really important and important for each other. Because, because, you, you know, you, you help each other in terms of there's more of you and you can, you know, the costs that happen, whether they happen down here or they're needed down here, or whether they happen, you know, up in in Mountain Valley and they're needed in Mountain Valley, more people, you know, help the situation. Um, I know that we've had situat, we've had um stuff that we've been able to share back and forth. You know, Mountain Valley High School got a J M G instructor with jobs for main grads. Um, they've been really helpful in bringing along, giving some of the kids down here opportunities to, well, we're gonna go on this. Um, do you have any kids that would like to, you know, jump on to? And then vice versa, um, we got a grant, um, uh Forest Collaborative is working with our, one of our science teachers down here, and then they'll have some projects and, and they'll talk up And then they'll have some projects and and they'll talk up, you know, so I think I think those are the things that are really good, you know, for our students that you can't really put a, you know, it not even necessarily a price tag on. But very important to me, um I was telling him as I came in, you know, my father graduated from this building in nineteen thirty four. I grew up in Hebron. I really care about this area. I don't want, you know, I don't I I I want it to be all of us together, all seven towns together. You know, we're not connected, you know, by land necessarily, but that doesn't matter, you know, um. And uh, I think probably everybody from time to times feels like they're left out from something somewhere. Because, you know, it's like there's only so much of you to go around and you, you know, and everything, but it it but I think you've got a great, um a really good school board. I think the people represent the folks down here. And I think the Mountain Valley folks really care about making sure people feel like they do. So I I um I watch that. I watch that. I remind people, don't I? I do. I remind people that it's all seven towns. You know, it's all seven towns. When we get all here about something, it's like, wait a minute, it's it's everybody, you know, and I I you know, could you do better just the three of you, just three towns alone? I don't know if you'd like it financially. I'll tell you, I know the superintendent in fifty six, which is Dixfield. I know her very, very well. Um, I knew her before the whole thing. And um, you know, it's, they've had to not have things that they used to or things that they would like to. Um, and they, you know, it's, you know, for example, she's the superintendent and the principal. So.
You could ask some of them, right? Why they may not like. Forty percent superintendent here our last year. And and we were, we operated very well. At another time earlier, we were like our superintendent, and you won't believe who took over, the secretary. And do you know who she was? Uh, Melissa Roy.
Melissa.
She was fabulous. She didn't have all the credentials, but she sure knew how to operate a school system. So anyhow.
I'm just curious. I think the level of engagement from, you know, parents, grandparents, community members is really important. I remember, you know, during my education, probably a parent teacher conference, engagement or turnout was, you know, ninety five to a hundred percent. You know, for all, we had trimesters and quarters at other points. And there was really good attendance for those, but it sounds like the other meetings, board meetings, committee meetings, whatever, not as well attended. Is there anything that we could do or anything we should be taking responsibility for to try and reach out and engage more people and attract them? Um, discussions like this are really good and really valuable, but there are less people in the room. The more people there are in the room, maybe the the less voices are heard too. So, you know, could we use technology in terms of like emails with surveys or even Facebook discussion groups? And try and integrate that with some of you folks, so you can individually answer questions and do research and get back to people? And then again, with the engagement component, is there something we could do to?
So, we have um an app, an RSU ten app that you can have on your phone.
Okay.
And we try to put everything, well, we put every meeting, um every meeting out on it. Um, where it is, what's the agenda? We we do agendas for all of our committee meetings and we put those out. Um, we used to send them to the town office. Uh, well, we probably still send them electronically to the town offices. Um, but, you know, we used to send them so people could post them, but, you know, that's a little bit.
No, it's not.
Like email, the RSU program is an email for the town office from like ten emails.
Yeah.
Uh, until so those things.
Got town.
Yeah, but um.
Post office.
They do do surveys, be a question.
Yeah, yeah.
He puts out surveys and puts staff.
And that's how we do it, though. We do it with through our app.
Is there any good couple like student enrollment with app enrollment or something like that to help encourage the engagement?
You you mean, oh, have people enroll on the app when they register? Or like in the beginning of the school?
So to get that familiar, get into down.
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't?
Yeah.
That sort of thing, maybe fly tax information for the local representatives, so people have a question they could engage with, like you directly or something like that.
Frank, yes, we have all on our website. We have all of our um board members and names there.
Phone numbers.
Emails.
She points to me like, I've used them.
Be a board rep for your town. You you can, you could email them. You could.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and it's your line.
And and I think phone numbers are really important. There is a significant segment of the community who don't have technology.
Right.
Don't use technology, don't feel comfortable with technology. So anything that's sent out as an email, as a Facebook, on an app. People aren't getting them. People don't understand them. People find them confusing. So finding a a way to to share this information, to share phone numbers. Um, many people would prefer to speak to somebody directly rather than.
Yeah.
An app.
But I I I get it, yeah.
So we're working together to how how can we?
Yeah.
Get that information out there and and so people feel that they have access.
Um, yeah.
I feel like that could fall a lot on your representatives too. Like, we could do a better job getting it out to the folks that aren't on.
Like I have a, like, like we have a list. We actually put the board meeting calendar schedule. We we put that out like, we do that in spring, like, you know, May, let's say. And that, you know, that, we we put on all of the website and stuff, but we we sent, I'm almost positive, we always did, send it to all the town offices. And the idea would be, you know, for the for the low tech to print it out and and post it in your, in all the town offices and stuff like that. You know, aside, but and that's the thing, we know it way in advance. So you're right, you know, so.
You do it, because when I was a select person, we used to make the announcement at the board meetings, because we got loads of crap for how much it costs the school, blah, 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 our budget, our budget, our budget. And we went. What's meeting? You have to go talk to them. You have to, their budget is their budget.
So you gotta go general rule, our school board meetings are are Mondays and they're typically second and fourth. I say that only because if there's a holiday, it's Tuesday. If like in December, we have one, it's, it will be the second Monday, the eleventh. And so those are pretty, you know, um and our committee meetings are the generally the third Wednesday of the month.
And those will get even less people in them because they're done during.
Oh, yeah. Well, no.
A lot of them are like.
Well, they they're five and six.
Yeah, most people are gonna get home.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that that that's the part that I don't think you'll ever get total participation. If we can just even get them to the board meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be brilliant.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the other things I was gonna ask is because typically you guys meet and I have a select board meeting the next day and a million other things going on, but um I like to go back and watch the meetings. I may not be able to go in person.
Okay.
Uh, and I, the website, it doesn't look like, it looks like the last meeting that was posted on there was from May first. If if the school got back to that.
Yeah, there was something that happened with Zoom allowing us to do it and and Brian was gonna, does that sound right?
Yeah, we.
Okay.
It's a recording.
Something. Here's the one like the low fear.
Yeah.
We don't use it enough.
So I know because somebody asked that at a meeting and and Brian was explaining that and said, I've got to look into something else in order if I'm gonna keep doing that. So.
Yeah, I remember I asked about it too.
Oh, maybe it would, yeah. Post our meetings, yeah. So that's something we can.
RS YouTube, the the channel, love the meal. So if it's recorded, it's just gonna be uploaded right to the to YouTube. You can have your own YouTube channel at the Department of Labor.
Well, you know, I think he was talking about that. I think that's what he was talking about, looking at YouTube. Okay. Okay.
Perhaps you got the message, because I talked to Peggy or Renee.
Oh, Peggy, yeah.
You 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 know that RSU ten is not listed in the Oxford County phone book? Yes, no, seven towns are in that town. I think one of them, uh, that's right, on Crawford's, his name. Yeah, no, but they're not, it's not listed as RSU ten. And interestingly, Turner is listed, which is not in Oxford County. Stat seventeen is and Vettel is.
So is um, would it be listed, is it not listed under RSU ten? Is it listed under Western Foothills? Okay, but that all the other RSUs.
All the other R S U's are there. And I I've mentioned this before, because they keep, for years, they just keep kept on listing this place as as the school superintendent. And I mentioned it several times. I haven't looked until the other day.
Who does that?
Anyhow.
Yeah, it just sounds familiar, what you're telling me.
Take a look.
I'm on the app and I see there's an an events calendar and November thirtieth, there's an equity meeting. It says Zoom. But there's no link or location.
Oh.
Right? And I'm not seeing that for like any of the like upcoming events. Not to be like, gotcha, just.
Meetings always virtual. And I really get updates as to what took place on that meeting, I asked. So something needs to improve.
Is is the other meeting listed for tension?
I couldn't.
I've seen November thirtieth, Equity Committee Meeting, Zoom, December eleventh, School Board Meeting, MBHS. But again, um, there's time, but there isn't like a location or a Zoom link option. Um, I have the option to share, but when I share, it just gives me the same information. So there's like an attachment for.
But so every every time it's at Mountain Valley High School, it's in the cafeteria, but that's a good thing to put on there. And and we should have the, we should put the link on there. Yeah, good point. Thank you.
Let Brian take care of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Go Brian.
He's so good. And when he's not there, we're like. Anything else?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Where's tomorrow and what time?
Where's tomorrow morning? It's at six o'clock in the cafeteria.
I like that.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Did you find it in there?
Uh, I didn't finish looking, but I didn't find it. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, my glasses are terrible. I can't really get them full. Sometimes.
It's only three forty.
Alright, next, the Buckfield, Sumner Solid Waste Agenda Review.
So based on what we talked about last meeting, I threw it together for you to look at.
Yeah.
Make sure I didn't miss anything.
Looks like what we were talking about.
And then I, I also included a copy of the uh agreement.
Yep.
That was sent to Sumner, um, because some of you have probably never seen it.
I'm not on the committee.
You still gotta sign the agreement.
Master, uh, the agenda.
Oh.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add to that. I think that's a good start since we're gonna have a lot of new members there, I believe, and uh
Yeah.
You know. I don't think we wanna overwhelm anything. Yeah.
And she left so much.
I'm sure they have a lot of.
Yes.
I'm just looking at the draft. Wasn't there, or maybe, I mean. So wasn't there going to be a beginning discussion or something with the budget on this? Or not, not just means you attend, because we'll we'll have entered budget season. Unless another meeting was scheduled.
Not that I recall. I mean, we're gonna do a financial update. I'm gonna do a financial update and give them an idea where we're at for this current year. Where we finished at the end of last year, because these three select board members have never sat through a solid waste committee meeting and probably have no idea how much the transfer station cost last year. Um, but as far as, I mean, yeah, December's the time that I'm gonna be working on putting together a preliminary budget for the boards. But really, what's gonna dictate any increases at this point is the cost of disposal.
Well, I guess my I guess my it's about timing. And when we do our budget work and when they move, but the conversation together as the solid waste committee about how much money may or may not be appropriated from the solid waste savings account or revenues to offset expenses in the twenty three, twenty four budget. So if you're not going to have another meeting with these folks, then this would be the meeting to have that discussion now, wouldn't it?
Yep. There you go, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so we'll, I'll add that into the financial update to discuss the an offset.
Cause I think it's important that.
Oh, yeah.
They may not know, but you gotta give them at least a chance.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, those things both in my March.
Yes.
Yeah, they definitely. So they go, so they basically go on a preliminary budget.
Right, yeah, uh, no.
Is it a March? No, Sumner typically votes, I I believe they just voted to move their voting to June.
Oh, okay, good.
Which wasn't there was a segment of the town that wasn't happy about that, but, you know, the understanding of, you know, at least you know what your budget is before you start the fiscal year. Uh, so they, next year, they're gonna be voting in June.
Yeah, so.
This year, they didn't vote till September.
Yeah, because of how messed up, but that's just.
Yeah, I've seen her call.
But I think it was March before. They were always voting on like the preliminary budget, which I always thought, well, what happens if we have to change it? Do we pay more?
Alright, new business, the consent agenda.
I didn't put the warrant numbers. Fifty and fifty one, payroll warrant fifty, accounts payable fifty one.
Oh, I got you.
Accounts payable warrant fifty one includes the RSU payment. I should just give you the check.
I'll make a motion that we have pretty different smut agenda as written, including the payroll warrant numbers. Did you just say?
Payroll warrant fifty one and accounts, uh fifty and accounts payable fifty one.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Thank you. Any discussion? All is in favor, Bob I?
Peter I?
Sombra I.
Thank you. The total on that is two hundred seventy four thousand, four hundred forty four dollars and fifty three cents. Approval of the minutes from November fourteen, twenty twenty three, Select Board Meeting. I did look at them and I didn't see anything.
I know you found a grammar issue, so.
The November fourteen, twenty twenty three Select Board Meeting.
Perfect, I'll say that.
Punctuation.
Any discussion? All in favor, Bob I?
Peter I?
Sombra I.
Thank you. Committee appointments.
This is a new appointment for one year.
Great.
This would be the one open position that was left vacant when Peter were with the.
I make a motion that we appoint Tim Brackett to the Road Committee for a one-year appointment.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, bye-bye.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Great, thank you, Tim. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Other business, public comment period. Are any public comments beyond what we had earlier? I know we let that go quite a while, but I really wanted the questions to get out there. Oh, yes. Vivian, sorry.
I, um, was a ballot clerk during this last. And I sat with a woman by the name of Judy Bennett.
Yeah.
I was so thankful that she was there to help me the first time I had ever done. During the day, I learned that she has been a ballot clerk for Buckfield. For like close to fifty years. And then later discovered that there was, uh, a little like postcard that said election. Elections heroes. And if I would have known at the time, I would have asked that something might be done. But for someone that has given that amount of service to Buckfield. I'm asking the board if it would be possible to print up minimally. A certificate of appreciation. Or something and, and, and invite her to a meeting and, and present that. To her because so, I mean, she was phenomenal and a pleasure to work with.
Yes, Judy's great. She's my next door neighbor.
All right, well, I didn't know that. So, and she doesn't know I'm sitting here talking about her, but.
There is.
I think if we're gonna continue to reach the goals of building committee back up.
Yeah.
That we have to really. Start thanking people in person and meaning with all sincerity, which I do.
I'm completely in favor.
So maybe that can go on with Jenny.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure we can take care of that. Everybody's nodding, yeah, practically about.
So specifically. We. Need to decide who's going to put together some kind of written appreciation. And. I don't know her well enough to know if she, if it would be. She would enjoy coming to a meeting or if she might consider it. A burden to have to, I, I don't know her well enough, but how, how should we?
Well, we could certainly invite her. I'm not sure whether or not she would.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, but, uh, rhetorical fashion, let her sign, well, yeah, that, that's a good alternative, I take.
All right.
Yeah.
So, um. Is there someone who would like to?
Yeah, is there?
Put together that written. Document.
Yes, I'll take.
Neighbor.
I'll take care of that. For checking for grammar.
Grammar. But then.
Yes, yeah.
Then we can put on the agenda for next time to publicly.
I'll even have it done for the very next meeting.
Nice.
All right.
And then we can send it. No, thank you. And I, I think that she makes a very. Good point that.
Yeah, I'll mention it. Yeah, so.
But that when people, if there's someone who should be recognized, someone who's gone above and beyond.
Yeah.
It, it's important that we appreciate the work that people are doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Anything else? So I did wanna make mention that, uh. Unfortunately, Buckfield Rescue was involved in an accident earlier this evening. They are okay. Um, they were not transporting anyone at the time. Uh, the ambulance is definitely gonna. Need some work. Yeah, uh, so that will likely be out of service.
Where was it?
Uh, Route Four.
That is the most dangerous place. No, what they said that the trooper on there.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. But it does happen a lot more than we hear about. I'm in the business, so I hear about it. So, but, yeah. We, we got very lucky in that the crew is okay. Nobody was injured, including anyone else involved, so.
No patient, no person. So did not impact patient care.
No.
In any way, didn't delay someone getting care. Is that the newer ambulance or?
It's our older one.
Is he all the way?
Yeah, so just to, you know, to be as transparent as with every, because I hate how rumors can fly on Facebook. And how things can be said. Yeah, it is, but either way, I'm gonna address it. So we did have a crew, not our duty crew. That volunteered to do a transfer from Franklin County. Yeah, Franklin Memorial Memorial, it was just, it's right. Yeah, I believe it was, or it was, it was in the North Oxford area. So with that said. I think we've only done probably. Half a dozen transfers this year.
Yeah.
However, because the budget revenue or the budgeted revenue, proposed revenue was budgeted. Based off of transfers, we still have to do that until our next. Budget cycle to ensure that we hit our projected revenue. Um, cause without that. Revenue coming in, if we miss that projection, then our numbers are off and realistically. Our rescue service is costing more to the taxpayers than what it, it should. Because those are the numbers that were presented to me and that was the numbers that were presented to the board and then later the citizens, so. At this point in time right now, the transfers, which we can't do because we're gonna get one ambulance now, but, um, for the. Were a necessary evil to make sure that we met what we projected, so. The transfers don't directly cost the taxpayers money. It generates revenue to offset the cost of re- rescue, which is. The end number that we tax out, so. I just wanna put that out there, cause I've already seen comments about why are we paying to. Yes, it's our equipment. Yes, yes, we bear people, but at the end of the day, we've already deducted the proposed revenue from what we tax people, so we have to hit that number.
Was it the other?
I don't know the specifics. I haven't had a chance to talk to the, the driver because we started this.
I just wondered for the insurance, with insurance, would they?
The damage was to the front end of our B, to our. Uh, the details about it, I, I don't feel comfortable answering it, cause I don't, I don't know the specifics yet, but. I don't think anything was, I don't think it was neglect or anything, an accident.
So people pull out into that road, you know. All the time.
Yeah, this was that stretch in J.
Yeah, so.
To that section of Route Four.
Yeah. Dangerous area for sure.
But. Just thought it was good to just mention it since rumors were already flying, so. Take it, have it.
Any other public comment? Well, thank you, everybody. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
At eight oh nine, it helps me when I do.
At eight oh nine, all in favor? Bye-bye.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who made the motion?
Me.
Okay, Bob, second.
Sandra. We're gonna go back and watch it anyway.
Yeah, well, have a good night.